Okay, welcome everybody to our city council meeting tonight. And I'd like to call our meeting to order. And I'll have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
The next thing on our agenda, we're going to have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation by Vera Bayless, and she is president of Brother Benno's Auxiliary. Welcome. And if you'll all remain standing after the pledge for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Almighty God, we are gathered here today to discuss the issues for the good of the city of Vista. Give us guidance to take the necessary steps toward keeping Vista a safe and viable place for all its citizens and visitors. As we work together, may we gain the support from each other and have positive resolutions to all the needs of our community. Help us to open our hearts to those in need locally and nationally, like the people who are suffering from disasters and are coping with loss of family members, neighbors, homes, businesses, like in the Midwest and Eastern states who have suffered harsh weather conditions. Let us all pray for rain to alleviate our drought here in California, something that affects all of us. We should be grateful to be living in the city of Vista. For over 50 years, it has been a great place to live and to work, as well as welcoming place for visitors. May it remain that way in the future. Let us be thankful for living in this amazing city, state, and nation. And be truly thankful to our military that protects us and sacrifices so much so we can be free. God bless America, amen.
Thank you, we appreciate that. That was very nice. In accordance to the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos sanitation district will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos sanitation district ordinance 2006-1. And the next thing, we will have the approval of the agenda by city manager Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, and there were no closed session held today. And so, the next thing on our agenda, we have some proclamations. And we have, the first one is a proclamation declaring February to be World Spay Month, and February, oops, am I off? And February 25th, 2014 is Spay Day USA in the city of Vista. And then, I also have the next proclamation is the American Heart Health Month. So, I will come down and do those. And I will have Dorothy McCorkle accept our proclamation, the first one. So, I'm going to read you the proclamation, and then you can accept it. So, just hold on here. Okay. It says, "Whereas pets provide companionship and health benefits to over 71 million households in the United States. And whereas humane societies and animal control shelters throughout the United States put down four to five million puppies, dogs, kittens, and cats each year due to a lack of available homes to care for the animals. This tragic overpopulation of pets costs the taxpayers of San Diego County millions of dollars annually through animal service programs aimed at coping with the millions of homeless animals. Whereas spaying and neutering has been shown to drastically reduce the number of animals, proving to be a wise investment in saving animal lives and taxpayer dollars, government agencies, veterinarians, humane societies, animal control agencies, and animal protection organizations join together to advocate the spaying and neutering of pets. Whereas the city of Vista is committed to recognizing and honoring organizations that are dedicated to the best ideals of responsible pet ownership. So now therefore, the mayor and members of our Vista City Council commend the organizations for providing humane educational outreach and low-cost spay-neuter services, as well as a commitment to improve the welfare of Vista's pets, people, and communities, and hereby proclaim the month of February 2014 as World Spay Month, and further proclaim Tuesday, February 25th, as Spay Day USA in the city of Vista." So, I'm proud to present this proclamation to you. And maybe, would you like to say a few words? Either place, well, over here, and then you can face the audience, over here.
It's an honor to be here and to talk about the animals because I'm a very committed animal welfare person. And I want to thank the council and all the rescue groups and the shelters for what they're doing to reduce pet overpopulation. Right now, if we have two dogs, in six years, they will produce 67,000 animals if they're not fixed. And if we have two cats, the number is even higher because they're more prolific, and the number is 420,000 in six years from two mating animals. San Diego Humane Society is offering a 25 spay-neuter surgeries on the 25th, if anyone wants to call them. You can also call SNAP, which is the Spay-Neuter Action Project, it's on the website. And there are a few other rescuers as well. We have to see if we, as a community, are willing to stop this horrible killing of the animals. An animal comes into the shelter, it might have been abandoned, or it might have been just born or just lost. And that animal may have to go home or be put down because there's no home for it. And so, all of us should be working towards helping to stop the pet overpopulation situation. And I wanted to mention one thing because it's so important that we microchip our pets. And for less than, well, a little over $10, you can have your pet microchipped at the shelter. And that's the very best way to have your pet found and reunited with you. So, that's important. And also, to remember that keep your cats inside because cats are not picked up by the animal control people. They're, they're just not, dogs are stray dogs, but not stray cats. So, with that, I'd hope that everyone in the community and in the city take responsibility for the animals that are around you, urge everyone to spay and neuter their pets, and remember that adoption is an option, but spay-neuter is the fix.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Whoops, whoops, whoops. Drop your pen. Our next proclamation is about American Heart Association Month, or American Heart Month. And so, actually, council member Rigley has her red on, and she is involved with that. So, why don't you come down and read this proclamation? I think that'd be good for you to do that, being, I have the pink on today, she has the red, which is, I think that'd be nice of her, for her to do that.
Thanks, Mayor.
So, there you go.
As the mayor mentioned, February is Women's Heart Health Awareness Month in the United States. And heart health is very important to me and my family. There's a long history of heart disease in my family and stroke in my family. So, this has been a cause that's near and dear to me for a long time. So, it has been with the blessing of the council and the mayor that we have this proclamation this evening. And to accept this proclamation for us, as a provider of direct medical services to our community in Vista, we have the CEO of the Vista Community Clinic with us this evening, Mr. Fernando Sanudo. So, if you wouldn't mind coming down, thank you. So, our proclamation reads, "Whereas heart disease is a risk for all Americans and is the leading cause of death for women, killing approximately one woman every minute. And that number does include, heart disease kills more women in the United States than all forms of cancer combined, so it is something to be taken very seriously. Whereas, over the last 10 years, the American Heart Association has made remarkable progress through its Go Red for Women campaign. However, there is still much work to do, which your unit, your clinics do here for our residents in Vista, which we appreciate. Whereas, more than 64 million Americans suffer from one or more forms of cardiovascular disease, including high blood pressure, coronary heart disease, congestive heart failure, stroke, and congenital heart defects that can lead to heart disease. And whereas, by developing good eating habits, being physically active, taking advantage of preventative screenings, and by avoiding drugs, tobacco, and excessive use of alcohol, individuals and families can significantly reduce the onset and burden of heart disease. And whereas, far too many Americans are unaware of the danger of cardiac arrest, about 95% of sudden cardiac arrest victims die before they reach the hospital. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council support the efforts of the American Heart Association and the Vista Community Clinic with our direct medical service providers, and encourage the residents of Vista to join the fight against heart disease and learn more about how to prevent it. And we do hereby proclaim the month of February 2014 as American Heart Health Month in the city of Vista." And I want to thank you so much for all that you do for our residents and what you're doing for your heart screenings that you do as well for our citizens. So, thank you.
So, I wanted to thank the council for recognizing the importance of what we do here at the clinic. In addition to the women that we see in all the screenings that we do, Vista Community Clinic currently serves 57,000 patients. Of those, we have 3,000 patients that are diabetic, many of which are duly diagnosed as diabetic and have cardiovascular conditions as well. So, to be recognized for the work that we do every day is incredibly appreciative by not only myself, but the clinic as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you. I see I have, council member, or deputy mayor Aguilera has this button pushed here, so...
Thank you, mayor. I was wondering if we could move oral communications up to the beginning or next?
I don't have a problem with that. Is that okay? I just have two. So, okay, so, the first one I have today is the Girl Scouts. So, I have Lily Aguilera and Kylie Record. Hey, you girls, you want to go around that side and then, face the council, and then face the council, and then pull the microphone down, so, yeah, scary, isn't it? There, I think that will work. And talk real loud.
Good evening, Mayor.
Lily, bring it down just a little more so we can hear. You've got to talk real loud so everybody in the back row can hear you.
My name is Lily Aguilera.
And I am Kylie Record. We are both Girl Scouts from Troop 4451 here in Vista. We are here tonight to tell you about our biggest fundraiser, the cookie sales. Our troop will be using the funds we raised to go on field trips, pay for supplies, and our biggest event, surf camp this April.
Girl Scouts is a great organization for young girls in our community, and we really help others too. Maybe you would like to donate to Operation Thin Mint today? We send cookies to our military troops.
Kylie and I would like, would love it if you would buy cookies from us tonight or donate to our military. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, girls. I'll buy some cookies from you. How do we do that? Just right over the, maybe... How should we do it? No, they can't, that's why we had them go first, they have to go practice. Okay, here they come. They got cookies for us, okay. Little photo opportunity there. Yeah, maybe, we'll take like a small break here, like five minutes, but we do cookies, okay? [laughter]
[laughter] I haven't brought many, I have many in the car, too.
We have dessert. Dessert along.
How much are they?
They're $4.
Oh, right there.
[laughter]
I think I caused a little bit of lotion here.
Sorry.
It's okay.
[inaudible]
Okay, there's more cookies. We didn't buy all of them, but we turned a big dent in it. Actually, I bought some for the military already. I had a little gal come to my house and I bought some. So, anyway, so now we are cookieed out here, and I guess I'll take the, our other last speaker, J.C., when do you want to, and then, and then we'll do our consent calendar. I asked J.C. if he is coming as Santa, a Santa type, or the Easter Bunny?
Oh, yeah. I've got to admit, I've got a freezer at home that's full of Girl Scout cookies, I love them. Even though the doctor told me a couple weeks ago, they're not allowed to eat them anymore. I said, "Doc, I'm going to die."
Wait, wait, we'll chat.
But, the reason I'm here this evening is because before we know it, we will be having an Easter here in the city of Vista. And I just wanted to find out if I need to get on the agenda to discuss the topic, or, you know, if the city's going to be able to afford to throw one for the kids of our community this year, if they need my assistance again, or how we going to go about doing this. And I'm hoping that this year, we could start a new tradition with a collaboration thing, where, yeah, the city's on board and all the volunteers come and do all the work. And it just really shows the kids how the adults can come together and help them have a good time in the park that we all love. And continue the traditions, because you know me, I'm one of them traditionalists, you know, where you've got to have an Easter egg hunt, and Santa's got to ride on the firetruck in the parade. So, if we could get together on this and work it out early, we've got it going on.
We'll have staff talk about it, and then we'll get ahold of you.
Yeah, okay. And I was thinking, if we get here now, we can get on a future agenda and talk about it. Santa's already got all the candy and volunteers lined up, ready to go, so...
Oh, okay.
All righty.
Thank you, J.C.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks. Okay, back to our agenda here. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So, I don't have anything from the public removing any item. Is there any item that anybody here wants to be removed?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Okay, that is unanimously approved, the consent calendar. The next thing on our agenda is our discussion item, and that, the first item is the fiscal year 2013-14 second quarter financial report. Dale Nielsen's going to take that.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the director of finance and city treasurer for the city of Vista. Before you this evening, I'm presenting the second quarter financial report for the, for the six months ended December 31st, 2013. At this point in time, all general fund revenues and expenditures are within budgetary expectations. We are going to recommend one modification that I'll discuss in just a moment. Exhibit three, starting on page 11 of the report, provides budgetary and actual revenue information for the general fund as of December 31st. As of December 31st, the general fund has received 39.4% of its total budgeted resources. The first half of the fiscal year is generally what I would call the lighter half of the fiscal year in terms of revenue because there's a number of large revenue sources that we do not receive until the second half of the fiscal year, among them being a large property tax apportionment in April, a VLF property tax payments that we receive in January and May, which amount to about $7 million, and a approximate $900,000 franchise payment from San Diego Gas and Electric. There's also a number of revenue items that are typically received in July, but they get dragged back into the previous fiscal year because that's when the city earned Exhibit five on page 15 reports similar information for general fund expenditures. These are at 41.5% spend of the total appropriated amount for the fiscal year. There's a number of recommended budget adjustment changes at this time, including an upward adjustment to the secured property tax revenue estimate in the amount of $320,000. This is due to property values increasing a little bit better than we anticipated when we were preparing this current year's operating budget last spring. Detailed discussion on each of the recommended budget adjustments, it can be found on exhibit two, which is on page nine of the report. Resolutions for adjusting the operating and capital improvement program budgets can be found on exhibits nine and 10 of the report. There's also a number of recommended personnel changes. These can be found on exhibit 11 of the report, with exhibit 12 being the resolution to enact those personnel changes. That's all I have for this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do I have any questions? Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Some are just for clarification, I guess, and then some are maybe to help explain what I'm looking at here. The first question I had is on page two of 30, it talks about the 1.6 million that we're ahead of last year's second quarter. The snapshot in time?
Yes.
So, I know you, you say that, you know, this is like the slowest quarter and all that, so it's not a great time to maybe project out, but, I mean, I'm assuming that's a pretty positive number.
Yeah, it is. Well, you've got to remember, it's all relative. We're comparing the first half of 1213, which 1213, you know, the first half of that year is also slower generally than the second half.
But, given that next six months are equal to last year, we will still be 1.6 ahead then, right?
Well, we're ahead of last year's number, not necessarily ahead of this year's budget.
Okay, okay.
But it's definitely in the right direction.
That's, that's good clarification then. And then, so, getting down to the local property tax, we've collected, I believe, 400,000? Now, is that, that's compared to last year, right? Or is that compared to the budget, what we budgeted?
The local property tax, could you...
Yeah, sorry, on page five of 30. It has 9.1 in unsecured property tax revenues, with opening tax rolls from the county indicating revenues of 9.6.
Yes.
So...
That, that is part of the reason that at this point, we're doing the upward adjustment of 320,000.
Okay. And then, this, this is just for explanation, I noticed down below, on the two paragraphs down, when it talks about building activity?
Yes.
And it gives an example of the Tri-City Christian School expansion, and it talks about the 150,000 square feet. Does a church like that pay property tax then, just like anybody else, any other business?
I don't think they pay property taxes. I mean, they have to pay their, their building permits and things like that when they go through an expansion like anybody else. But I believe churches are exempt from the property tax rule.
Okay, that's good to know. And then, so then that's, that 634,000 from, two paragraphs down from that, is that, that's from the building permits, right?
Yeah, that's, that's building, engineering, and planning fees combined.
Okay. So, now I get to the tougher questions, I guess. The Prop L, I noticed that, that we are at a net of, negative net of 1 million on that. Is that just for six months, though?
Yeah, that is, that line there for 1314, you know, the revenue for the first six months was 2.3, and the expense was 3.3. But a couple things to keep in mind is that with sales tax, which is, you know, Prop L, the amounts that we receive in July and August of any given year really relate back to the previous year. So, when we look at a sales tax number kind of on a cash basis for December, we're really only looking at four months of what is going to be revenue of this year. Because when we get to the end of this year, you know, we have June, we're still going to have two more months of sales tax revenue coming in. And, you know, the 3.3 million, the lion's share of that expense is the debt service on the 2007 certificates of participation that were issued in order to build the community projects.
So, where do you think we're going to end on that number?
Well, we do know that for the next few years, we're going to actually be spending more on debt service and the amount that we allocate for fire services, the approximate 1.2 million per year than we are bringing in in Prop L revenues. But we knew that that was going to happen, and that's why, when you look at, if you look at that chart going all the way back to the beginning, you'll see that there were surpluses accumulated every year, and we banked those and reserved those because we knew that we were eventually going to get to the point where those revenues and expenditures would flip. And right now, our projections take us, I believe, to the 1920 fiscal year before those revenue, those reserves would be exhausted. But that is using only a very conservative 2% growth in Prop L, you know, sales tax revenues each year. So, for example, this year, you know, we project 2%. If we come in at two and a half or two and three quarters, which, which isn't a real stretch, that'll push that, you know, 19 fiscal year, 1920 projected crossover out to maybe 22, 23. It's, you know, we may never get to the point where we reach that crossover point. on the 2007 certificates of participation that were issued in order to build the community projects.
So where do you think we're going to end on that number?
Well, we do know that for the next few years, we're going to actually be spending more on debt service and the amount that we allocate for fire services, the approximate 1.2 million per year than we are bringing in in Prop L revenues. But we knew that that was going to happen. And that's why when you look at, if you look at that chart going all the way back to the beginning, you'll see that there were surpluses accumulated every year. And we banked those and reserved those because we knew that we were eventually going to get to the point where those revenues and expenditures would flip. And right now, our projections take us, I believe, to the 1920 fiscal year before those revenue, those reserves would be exhausted. But that is using only a very conservative 2% growth in Prop L, you know, sales tax revenues each year. So for example, this year, you know, we project 2%. If we come in at 2.5 or 2 and 3/4, which isn't a real stretch, that'll push that, you know, 19 fiscal year, 1920 projected crossover out to maybe '22, '23. It's, you know, we may never get to the point where we reach that crossover point.
So the 5.4 is what's, we have in reserve to hold us over out to the 19...
That's correct, yes.
...20 year.
That's what's kind of what's in the bank right now.
Okay, and then, okay, that's enough on that, I guess. But the last question I had has to do with the, I guess, the enterprise funds?
Yes.
Sewer, Buena sanitation. So I notice in our 2012-13 annual financial report.
Yes.
That we received, it was on my desk this month. And I noticed that we finish the year with total assets of 133 million for City of Vista Sewer and 78 million for Buena Sanitation. And, forgive me, but I can't remember where we finished in the latest. But we're down 2 million on one and 3 million on the other. Where did...
Well, you've got to remember, yeah, there's a good reason for that. And it's based primarily that, you know, our sewer services, that's an ongoing operation. You know, we have expenses year-round. We're paying Encina for the, you know, the summer quarter and the fall corner. But probably 90 to 95% of our sewer revenues, we put on the property tax roll every year. So we don't get our first real inflow of current year revenue in the sewer funds until the December property tax apportionment. So it's kind of like we've got this six months of, you know, living off what we have in the bank. And then we start receiving our revenues for the, for the year for the sewer funds. So I'm not at all, you know, alarmed or surprised by the numbers you're looking at.
No, I understand that. But I'm looking at the, this is exhibit eight.
Okay.
And it shows revenues for City of Sewer. And it shows a plus of a million. And the Buena sanitation down 1.6 million for revenues. But again, I'm looking at where we finished 2012 and 13 versus where we're at right now. And those numbers just don't add up, so...
Well, let me tell you, first of all, Buena is what I would kind of expect to see right now. When you look at the column for the City Sewer, there's one item that stands out that is kind of unusual. And you'll see that, that is the connection fees up there, the second line, for 1.6.
Right.
I mean, that number is way higher than what we would normally see at this point. And it's because we have a couple of large projects, you know, the...
Right, under construction.
...family, or the multi-housing units there on Melrose and Oceanside Boulevard and a couple of other big projects that have come in that we've, we've collected a large amount in the connection fees. So that's kind of, while it's a good thing, it's kind of an aberration.
Okay, I guess my question, though, is, we do have, it shows revenues over expenses of a million, right?
Correct.
And then for Buena Sanitation, it's negative 1.6.
Yes.
Under. Should those numbers, combined with where we finished 2012, 2013, get us to the same numbers that we have for the six months ending December 31? Because they're, they don't add up. One's different.
Well, you've got to remember that...
3 million in assets versus 2 million, or 2 million in the other.
Well, if you look at the second line from the bottom for City Sewer, that fund equity number at June 30th, 13 of 123 million.
Yes.
That is what was in the audited financial statements, the CAFR.
Okay.
And so...
Okay, so that's, that's where the difference is at compared to what I'm looking at here?
I can't see what you're... Yeah, if you, if you, if you go to the enterprise fund statement on that CAFR, the total fund equity, or in there it's called net position.
Net positions, right.
For City Sewer should be 123 million.
I see it.
And as I've alluded to, you know, in an explanation to one of my exhibits, when you have the balance sheets like a Polaroid snapshot in time of what you own, what you owe, and the differences, you know, fund balance or your equity. And, and so envision that that 123 million is a snapshot in time of what you have. And then the income statement is more like a movie that tells a story over time. So you have a snapshot in time, you run your movie of an income statement, and you then end up with a new snapshot of where you're at now.
Got it. Okay, thank you for your answers.
Certainly.
If anybody else has questions, I'll move to approve.
I don't see any other questions. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second, and no further questions or discussions, so please cast your ballot. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Nielsen.
The last thing on our agenda, almost the last thing on our agenda, is a public hearing. It's a temporary use permits code amendment. So we'll open the public hearing. And John Conley is going to take this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Patsy Chou, our city planner, will be making the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Reader, council members, Patsy Chou, city planner with the Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is concerning an amendment to the Development Code with respect to temporary use permits. Just to give you a little bit of background on this topic, currently, we have two processes under the temporary use permit section of our code to allow specific uses on private property within our commercial and industrial zones. And there is listed on this slide, basically, we have the zoning administrator review process that goes through a public hearing. And we also have an administrative review process that is done without a public hearing. Recently, concerns have been expressed by the local automotive dealerships based in Vista with respect to allowing car sales via a temporary use permit on private property, where the primary use is non-auto related. And concerns have been with the fact that dealerships based in other jurisdictions are coming to Vista to set up these temporary sales events. And with that resulting in loss of sales activity and therefore businesses going to outside dealerships that are based in other jurisdictions. With these concerns in mind, the particular request of this code amendment is then to modify the zoning administrator process whereby we would be removing the auto recreational vehicle in boat sales from the list of permitted uses under the zoning administrator process while keeping the other listed uses as they are currently found in the code. And with that, the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance that would amend chapter 18.76 of our Development Code with respect to temporary use permits and particularly related to auto recreational vehicle and boat sales. And this concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. You talked about the loss of sales tax revenue in the city. And I wanted to ask about that because as a resident of Vista, when we purchase a car, no matter where we purchase it, we're paying that additional half cent sales tax. So that's all the sales tax that we're getting from that sale? We're not getting the rest of the sales tax that would normally be generated in Vista?
I actually have a slide that I'd like to put on the screen that hopefully will help address the question that councilmember Rigby's raising. And I don't think my clicker is actually working for the hidden slide, Marcy. If you could please put up the, thank you. Basically, there is, the loss of the sales activity is really the key concern issue at this time with respect to the temporary use permit sales. The issue with the sales tax is that the sales tax that's coming from car sales activity, it really goes to the jurisdiction where the vehicle is actually going to be housed at. So i.e. would be the registered owner's place of residence. So in fact, in our case for City of Vista, we are going to get the 1% out of that sales, from the car, the car sales. In terms of car sales, and leases when a Vista resident's actually purchasing a vehicle, because then it will come to the place of residence, which would be Vista. Or it would be, it could be in the form of a Vista local dealership where they're actually leasing a vehicle. Because then in that case, the dealership is the owner or the registered owner of the vehicle when the lease expires. So the issue at hand related to the temporary use permits becomes more of a loss of the sales activity rather than a loss of sales tax in this case. And not also, obviously not being able to offer services or maintenance or parts because the customers are going to the temporary tent sales and maybe going back to their original dealership or some other city instead of going to a local Vista dealership or automotive dealership. I hope that answers or helped address the question.
It's somewhat. I just hate to see, I mean, I, tent sales, other people coming into town, you know, carpetbaggers, if you would, trying to sell to our residents. On the other hand, if our residents are buying from those vendors, then they're finding a need in the community that's not being filled for, whether it's the product or if it's the price of the product or something like that. But I hate to limit free market enterprise anywhere, whether it's Vista or Southern California or statewide. But I am concerned about the loss of sales tax revenue to the city from outside vendors coming in and not filing with the Board of Equalization permits or... Because I understand some of them don't do that, so they have no idea where they should be charging sales tax for. So that's my concern. It's very difficult to balance the concerns regarding sales tax and business permits into the city versus people being able to buy the product that they need at a price they can afford from a vendor that they choose. So that was my only concern, my only question on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera, oh, I did it. Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, I mean, I definitely agree with councilmember Rigby. I have some of the similar concerns. But I think one of the things I look at is, we have, you know, several businesses that sell vehicles here in Vista who pay rent or own property here in our city directly pay property tax. They're, when they do have servicing done here in the City of Vista, we do collect taxes on that as well, as well as accessories that are sold. Somebody buys rims, tires, what have you. So that is, you know, taxes that we're going to get from our local businesses. The other thing I look at is, we actually happen to be, you know, landlords of a couple of these places as well. And, you know, we need to protect our businesses. You know, my, I have a very limited knowledge on these cars, you know, how these car companies work, but, or dealerships. But I do, I do know that one of the biggest things that we've been dealing with over the last couple of years is where do they store their cars? And that's a big investment for these businesses, whether it's BMW, North County Ford, classic Chariots. You know, they have to either purchase property or lease property to store vehicles. And by allowing these tent sales here in our city, you're allowing an outside dealer who may have gone to an auction, purchased a bunch of cars, and basically for a weekend, get to store those vehicles for a really cheap price at Walmart or wherever they're doing these, these sales. And it makes it uncom, not, not a fair situation for, you know, again, some of the dealerships that I mentioned. And they're paying, you know, for properties here in Vista to store their vehicles. These guys are coming in and renting it for pretty cheap, is my understanding, to store their vehicles for the weekend, poach some of their sales from our local businesses. So I think I'm in support of this, this ordinance here. And I think we need to figure out how we can protect our, our local businesses. So I'm in favor.
Councilmember Coles.
Yeah, and I appreciate the clarification on sales tax. I, I know that in the old days, you went to where the cheapest sales tax by your car. And the state has fixed that so that wherever you live, you pay the prevailing tax. So we do get our share, no matter where people buy. And I, I think I, while I agree with as much free enterprise as we can encourage, these tent sales do tend to leave me with the feeling of some, kind of a carpetbagger coming in and taking away from our longstanding car dealerships. And instead of making it harder for them to compete for sales, I'd like to, you know, be able to track more dealerships within our, our city. And to do that, I think we need to make the climate for their sales more rewarding here in Vista because they are paying, they're, they're paying annual business taxes. They're paying annual fees. And above that, they're supporting our community events to a great extent. And they become part of our Vista family. And, and I think this sometimes leaves me with a feeling of kind of an unfair competitive edge. As Deputy Mayor Aguilar pointed out, they get some pretty cheap storage for a weekend or a week or something. So I'm, I'm in support of the, this proposal.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you. You know, a couple of meetings back, I want to thank the council for agreeing to have this issue come back before us. I think this is an important step in protecting our local auto dealerships in Vista. You know, as a council member in Vista, I understand councilman Rigby's comments about free enterprise and not wanting an overreach of government regulation. But my job as a council member, I feel, is to help our local businesses in Vista, to help create local jobs, not worry about auto dealerships coming in from San Diego, coming up to Vista to set up for the weekend, sell some cheap cars and disappear, leaving the buyers to not know where to go for service, warranty repair, a whole range of issues. So I'm very much in favor of this ordinance and helping to protect our local businesses, our local jobs, and consumers that buy cars from legitimate auto dealers here in Vista versus tent sales not really knowing who you're buying the car from in many cases where you have these sort of fly-by-night operations. They come in and they're, they're gone and they never come back. So I'm very much in favor and would like to make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt this item, adopting the temporary use permits code amendment.
Okay, seeing no more speakers, then I would say cast your ballots, your votes, please. Not quite a ballot. That motion passes four to one. The next thing on our agenda is our, we have remarks. So I guess, are we at the end of our agenda? I'm looking for more things to discuss. Okay, so I guess we'll start. You want to start, councilmember Rigby?
Thank you. As you all heard, February is Heart Health Month in the City of Vista. Woo-hoo! And to that end, I just want to tell everybody, and the City Council and our staff up here on the dais has been given the flyer, but we're going to be having a really fun event on February 23rd, Sunday. It starts registrations at 11 o'clock. The kickoff is at noon at the Vista Village Pub. And it's going to be a fundraiser for the American Heart Association. And it's called Walk a Mile in Her Shoes to recognize Women's Heart Health Awareness Month. And it's a red high heel walk. So we're just going to be walking down Main Street from the Vista Village Pub and up to Kirkorian and across and back again with signs and, and red shoes. You don't have to wear high heels, although I do encourage it for everybody. And it's just going to be a walk up with signs just to bring some awareness in the community to Heart Health Month in Vista. And it's a fun community event. And I hope to see everybody come out with your red high heels and your red clothes or wear red. Anyway, so it's, everybody has a flyer on this. So I would encourage you all to come. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
You're looking at the men. Are the men wearing high heels too?
I'm encouraging everyone to wear red high heels. Thank you, yes. Come out and support the Women's Heart Health Month and support the women in your lives. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do you have extra red high heels for me?
Mr. Johnson might. Sorry, sorry about that.
I only bought one pair for myself.
They're, they're called kinky boots. You can see that on Broadway.
Okay. Councilmember Coles.
Uh, yes, I, I don't have much to say other than, uh, at, at our last meeting, the, the Maikish representatives from R B V and the high schools, uh, made a presentation to us. I was able to, uh, put together a foursome to play in their golf, their first annual golf tournament yesterday was a real success. Uh, their goal is to raise fifty thousand dollars for three, uh, young children who, who need their help. And, uh, next, uh, Tuesday, they're doing the check presentation at R B V High, which we've been invited to, and I hope we can all show up.
I think they're still taking donations to This Is Big Give also. So, I, I think you can do it online. And I'm not sure the website, but, um.
So, that's it, thank you.
ThisIsBigGive.com? No, just This Is Big Give? Go, Google it, he says. Okay. Okay, councilmember Campbell.
Just a couple of things to report. I'd like to say that, um, the end of last month, on the thirty-first of January, had the privilege of attending the, uh, grand opening or ribbon cutting for the new naval hospital out at Camp Pendleton. That's their new four hundred and fifty-six million dollar hospital facility. And, uh, had an opportunity to meet with quite a few dignitaries from the Defense Department. And, uh, it's a great new facility that's going to serve our military community and civilian community very well in the coming years. Uh, last week, also had an opportunity to tour, uh, the Vista Courthouse and see their operations and how we can better work with the constituents in Vista and getting, uh, that wide range of services that the Vista Courthouse provides to our citizens here in Vista. And also had an opportunity to meet with, uh, and attend an event with the state's lieutenant governor last week as well. So, uh, nothing else to report.
Yeah, we were sorry, um, councilmember Rigby and I were at the Sandag Retreat, so we were sorry that we couldn't make it to the hospital grand opening. Deputy Mayor Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I'd like to talk about, uh, the memorial service that you and I and, uh, councilmember Rigby, uh, attended this past weekend. It was a real nice event. It was for the sheriff here in San Diego County, where they honor their fallen, uh, brothers and sisters who serve our community, uh, throughout the county. And, uh, they also honored a couple of gentlemen from the Encinitas Sheriff and who were shot last February. Um, and both have, uh, come back and are continuing to serve in the Sheriff Department. And I thought that was a, a great event. And it's an event that's held every year to remember those who have, uh, given all to our community. And, um, I'd just like to also add that, uh, February twenty-second, Saturday morning at eight A.M. at the Senior Center, we will be, the Amigos of Vista Lions Club is going to have a pancake breakfast. Um, I've got tickets if anybody wants some. I'll also be cooking pancakes in the back. Um, but this, this is a fundraiser. We use this money to help fund the, uh, city's basketball league, the rec league here that's sponsored through the City of Vista. One of the, um, things that we sponsored or put up is the scoreboard that's actually in the now Jim Porter Center, the recreation center there where the basketball games are held. So, we, we donate money for that and, you know, I think even the front, the sign in the front. So, that's what the money's, uh, being used for. Uh, so if you are hungry for pancakes, eggs, sausage, it's actually a very good breakfast. It'll be, uh, Friday the twenty, or Saturday, the twenty-second at eight A.M. till eleven. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Delicious pancakes. Okay, I'm just, uh, one, uh, which I forgot to mention on our, our last, um, item. Thinking about the sales tax and keeping sales tax in Vista, um, if, if we could, I don't know if you would agree to this, to process a code amendment that would require a retailer doing business temporarily in Vista to register the site with the Board of Equalization. And then also, um, sale, those sales will be posted to Vista. Because I know people come in from out of town and, um, and then maybe their, their sales tax goes back to where they're, they're located. And I know that when I used to do conventions, um, for Jazzercise, we'd, um, out of state in different places, we would have to actually get a permit with the Board of Equalization in that state or that city that we went to, to sell our sales tax that we sold at the convention went to that city. So, it's not like an unusual thing. So, it'd be nice to require that as part of the permitting process and, um, require a copy of the, um, Board of Equalization's site change, you know, when they, when, when somebody wants to come in and do like a, a site, a, a sale, like a sale out in the parking lot or something like that.
I agree. I think that, uh, something that I had alluded to with the Board of Equalization. So, I'd be very interested to see if we could, uh, come up with that ordinance.
Would we need to agendize that?
Yes, we would.
I'd agree with that.
Do I have three people, is that what agendizes it?
Yes.
I'd like to see that on a future agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, um, actually, we have, uh, we're doing, um, a mini State of the City events. So, um, because we always did one event for the State of the City, and it was a paid event for luncheon, and a lot of business people would come, and we, and we still do. But then, I think, um, we did one last year at the Boys and Girls Club, and we had a lot of people that attended, and we, we just had cookies there. There's no, there was no charge, it was a free event. So, um, we want to do that again. And so, um, these events are open to the public. We have three of them scheduled. Um, we'd like to have you come to one if you could. Um, and that kind of just tells you what's going on in the city and, you know, what, you, when you see grading somewhere, then we'll tell you, you know, what, kind of what that is. We'll just kind of update you on all the projects in the city and things. We have one Wednesday, um, February twenty-sixth. Is that next Wednesday? Two weeks, two weeks, February twenty-sixth, and that's at the Boys and Girls Club in Vista. We have one, uh, Monday, March third, at Breeze Hill Elementary School. And we have one, uh, Monday, March seventeenth at our library, the Vista Library here. So, more information is available on our city website, the CityofVista.com for that. Um, the AVO has a new show coming up. It's called Blythe Spirit. It opens on February twentieth and runs through March ninth. And you can get information on tickets at, uh, MoonlightStage.com for, for tickets to that event. And, um, the Civic Center Art Exhibit. So, to, the Civic Gallery's Vision, Vista Visions two thousand and fourteen exhibit will open on Saturday, February twenty-second with a public reception from two to four. So, go to Pancake Breakfast on the twenty-second, and then you can come over and go to the art exhibit out here in the, it would be out here in our foyer. Um, it's a great, uh, opportunity, many, to meet many of the artists. So, and if you look out right now, the, the schools have done, um, an art exhibit out there now that you can, that we have out there. So, those are all, I think, my announcements. Does anybody have anything else? Oh, sorry, city manager. Got to look the other direction.
Two items really quick. Just a reminder that city offices and the city library will be, or the library will be closed on Monday in recognition of President's Day. However, the trash, uh, and recycling will remain in full service, so there won't be a delay there. And then, uh, another, uh, happening on February twenty-second, it's going to be a busy day. But from eleven A.M. to four P.M. at the Kirkorian Center, there is Safety Day taking place. So, the Vista firefighters, uh, this is sheriff's deputies, as well as the Skate Park Coalition will be out and, uh, requesting, uh, the public to attend and learn more about, uh, firefighting, sheriff's deputy work, as well as, uh, skateboarding and how to be safe. Thank you.
Anything from our attorney?
Not this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Anything from our city clerk? Nothing today? Okay, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did have one last thing.
Okay.
If I might. Uh, just a quick thing. Yesterday, Assistant City Manager, Allie Zimmerman, and I attended the League of California Cities, uh, meeting. And the presentation was about the two-one-one system in San Diego County. And I just wasn't sure, I wanted to put that out there to everybody. If you're not familiar with the two-one-one system, it's like we have four-one-one, nine-one-one. Uh, it's two-one-one, and it's information services. They have people on the other end, live, live representatives, that can answer a multitude of questions for you, can help you walk through paperwork if you're trying to sign up for Covered California, Medicare, Medicaid, also Veterans Affairs benefits, they can help you with that information. They can put you in touch with, uh, very, so many different, uh, social agencies, medical agencies, et cetera. So, if you're not familiar with the two-one-one system, I encourage you to Google it and learn about it. So, I just wanted to put that out there to everybody.
Thank you. And with that, if nobody else has anything, we are adjourned at six-thirty.
An hour.
An hour, yeah.